All right, it is 6:02 PM. This is Mayor Rich Landsberg. I would like to make clear for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected.
Rich, you cut out and I can't hear anything.
Can't hear anything?
No, I can't. You cut out there for a second.
I'll start at, this is the regular city council meeting of April 7, 2020. Of the Woodland City Council will be conducted pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N-2920. Did that come out okay?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
This meeting will be held via teleconference and council members will participate via teleconference. Their locations are not listed on the agenda and are not accessible to the public. Public is encouraged to listen to the city council meeting live on Woodland TV Channel 20 and by going to the City of Woodland website at www.CityofWoodland.org/meetings. If a member of the public wishes to make a statement during the general public comment period or on a specific agenda item, there are two ways to do that. First, members of the public were invited to leave a voicemail message at 530-661-5900. All voicemail messages received by 6:00 PM today will be played during the city council meeting and read into the record at the appropriate time. Any member of the public watching the livestream who wishes to make a comment on an item as it is being heard may submit an email to the city clerk at councilmeetings@cityofwoodland.org prior to the public comment on that item. Email comments submitted will be read into the record. They'll be no more than three minutes when read aloud. Please include the agenda item on your subject line. At this time, Madam Clerk, it would be appropriate for you to conduct roll call. Please, each member of the council must identify themselves during the roll call.
Thank you. I'll take roll call in alphabetical order. Councilmember Barajas?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Present.
Mayor Landsberg?
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Present.
Mayor Protem Stalard?
Present.
Thank you. And then now I would like to request that each council member respond to these questions. Mayor Protem Stalard, can you hear me well?
I can.
Councilmember Barajas, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez, can you hear me well?
Yes.
And now, does each member of the council have a copy of the agenda for this meeting? Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barajas, do you have a copy of the agenda?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Landsberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stalard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, have you posted the agenda at a location reasonably accessible to the members of the public?
Yes, I have.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let the record reflect that all council members are present for this teleconference meeting and have indicated that they are able to hear the proceedings. At this time, I am requesting that other city officials introduce themselves and their positions so that the record can reflect their attendance at this meeting.
Evening, Mayor Landsberg. Ken Hyatt, interim city manager is here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Cara Huetta, City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is Anna Gonzalez, City Clerk.
And I'll go ahead and read in the other staff members who are attendant on the call. Chief Derek Caff, Chief Eric Zane, Emily Walling, Laura Marshall, Christine Engel, Community Services Director, Craig Locke, Public Works Director, Brad Meyer, Acting CDD Director, Kim McKinney, Finance Officer, and Scott Stallman, IT Manager are all in attendance by call.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Now, as we go to the agenda, I would request that before speaking, you should identify yourself before you speak. For example, this is Councilmember Barajas, et cetera, et cetera. Let the individual speak, and please do not interrupt. I would ask that, to the greatest extent possible, everyone mute their phones so that we don't get unnecessary background noise. I would now like to advise all council members and the city clerk that any votes taken during this teleconference portion of this meeting must be taken by roll call. And I will ask Madam Clerk to take that roll call for any and all votes. Now, we will begin with the agenda. I'm going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If I can ask Councilmember Rodriguez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. It is, at this time, we're going to do Item D, Public Comment. Madam Clerk, are any public comments you received by voicemail?
Yes, I do have one.
I am trying to get on the city website in the live video feed. It says, "No media file available." I followed the directions. This is Bruce Jacks, 666-2562. The time is 6:05.
Okay, Jay Comer has told me that this has already been set.
Thank you.
And I do have two email messages.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Mayor and City Councilmembers, I see that Consent Calendar Item Number Four is to approve the interim zoning ordinance. This unfortunately has fallen off my radar as I've been concentrating on a future city council public hearing item. To frustrate public input, the current national health crisis and Woodland's virtual city council meeting format has caused a severe hardship to local residents who want to be heard at a public meeting to voice comments on critical local issues. My comment is that allowing self-storage projects by use permit in the community commercial zone is a gross misuse of prime commercial land, particularly along the East Main Street corridor. Woodland has a single commercial corridor of significance, which is West Main, Main and East Main Street from Road 98 to East City Limits. There is community commercial zoning on East Main Street and Pioneer Avenue that over time has been sacrificed to construct storage unit projects. Storage units belong in the industrial zone and East Main Street frontage should be preserved for viable commercial projects that generate jobs and sales tax revenue and that provide service to the community other than dead use of storage. The city has apparently moved to the operating agreement solution for an upcoming storage project, which is a poor excuse to replace jobs, sales tax revenue, and more desirable job and service commercial development. I request therefore that the city council remove the interim zoning ordinance from the consent calendar and send it back to staff for revision, specifically to remove storage unit projects as a permitted use in the community commercial zone. Exact count is difficult to obtain, but I estimate that there are currently about 11 storage sites locally with over 4,000 existing storage units in Woodland, plus another 150 at a new project on County Road 102. Expansion of the Road 102 project and build-out at the storage site on Canary Road will push the total to about 5,500 storage units. Approval of the East Main Street Woodland Storage CUP project on April 21st would raise the ultimate count to about 6,300 storage units, or one storage unit for every 10 Woodland residents, young and old. If Woodland needs this type of development so badly, the city should designate a segment of the industrial area as a storage unit mall, similar to an auto mall. In summary, please remove the interim zoning ordinance from the consent calendar and send it back to staff to remove the permitted use of storage unit projects in the community commercial zone. Thanks for the opportunity to submit public comment. Bruce Jacks, Woodland, California. And I have one more. Mayor and Councilmembers, the City Public Works Department has requested public comment related to the proposed Gibson Road Diet where the current four travel lanes from East Street to West Street will be narrowed and West Gibson Road will reduce from four to two lanes. The speed limit will reduce to 30 miles per hour. Comments are due by April 10 to 2020. Because Gibson Road from Road 98 to East Street is the only east-west arterial corridor in Woodland, this project will impact nearly every Woodland resident. Notice of this project to the public, however, is inadequate by any measure. The Daily Democrat published an article on March 27 describing the roadway diet and the City Public Works Department requests for comments. Other than that newspaper article, no one I've talked to in the neighborhood has heard anything about the big changes. A project of this magnitude and impact needs a public forum and a suitable meeting place for city staff to present the project. A virtual meeting is not an adequate substitute. Two other similar projects, the West Main Street and West Court Street pedestrian and bicycle safety projects, would also benefit from public forum meetings. The approved design bike lanes with, on these two projects, do not promote bicycle safety. At a skinny three-foot of rideable bike lane asphalt next to an 11-foot vehicle lane, the state mandated three-foot clear from vehicle to bicyclist is not possible. In summary, the Gibson Road Diet and West Main Street and West Court Street projects deserve a public meeting forum for Woodland residents to hear the project facts from staff and be provided the opportunity to make comments. Bruce Jacks, Woodland. And this is all I have for now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're now going to move to Item E, that's council member and staff's comments. I'm going to start with Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just been a pretty quiet week, but otherwise thankful for being safe along with family on my end. Haven't gotten out too much this past week, which I think is good for everyone, and the more we do of that, the better. I do have a concern. Maybe we could have staff look into this, Mr. Mayor. I saw on social media that we had another accident within this past week at Maxwell and Road 102, and I'm thinking that we might have to go back and look at the traffic signal countdown timer on the Maxwell and Road 102 intersections. I know back in the days, I recall getting a concern about a resident whining for us to expedite the timer. I don't know where we left off as far as what the amount of time we had in the past and how much it's been reduced, because I have noticed that it is a much faster iteration before you reach the light and between the changes from red, yellow, green, et cetera. But if we could look into that and see what iteration we have in there and see if we could make some improvements to limit the amount of accidents on that intersection. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. I'm going to go to Councilmember Barajas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Landsberg. I just want to first thank the community members of Woodland for just being able to stay home, shelter in place, and just really stick to the guidelines that have been in place by our governor and by our county and our city. I think we're doing the best job that we can possibly do, and I know it's very difficult to stay indoors, but as time goes by, we're adapting and getting used to it, and we're helping out not just each other, but just the whole community and setting a good example for the region. So, kudos to all the Woodlanders. I've been working with staff and the mayor regarding the request to look into some masks for farmworkers. As we know, a lot of the farmworkers are essentially another essential group of workers who are lifeline to us. They pick the crops of, they pick the crops of Yolo County and throughout the state of California, and without food, obviously, we wouldn't be able to survive. And I know that Ken Hyatt, our staff, is looking to, and have been connecting with the county to see how Woodland, the city of Woodland, can step in and provide some type of resource. Not necessarily the N95 masks as they're in short supply and they need to be provided to hospital workers and public safety officers, but maybe perhaps some other type of mask that we can provide or some type of participation for the city of Woodland in providing some package program to some of the farmworkers. So, we're working with Ken on that, and hopefully, we can get some traction soon. And in regards to other activities in the community, I haven't been meeting with anybody, obviously, but I still feel, I'm still receiving phone calls from members of our community asking if, they're asking if we have enough beds in case there is a spike. The concerns of how we're doing, do I have inside information? And they just want to get updates, and I refer them to the county's website, which has an updated count of those that have been exposed to COVID-19. And we have a, obviously, low mortality rate of just one person have passed away, unfortunately. And that would conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barajas.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
A suggestion. Library Board Member Gloria Rodriguez, Councilmember Barajas, put an effort together where she brought volunteers together to make masks for farmworkers. So, that might be a joint effort for what you're trying to do with, along with staff. So, it's a great, great effort she's put together, and I think we all benefit from that partnership. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Member Rodriguez. Now, I'm going to go to Councilmember Fernandez.
Thanks, Mayor Landsberg. Yeah, I wanted to also just commend our residents for their perseverance and high spirits during this difficult time. I mean, beyond just the general anxiety related to health concerns that exist among many of our residents, I know a lot of individuals, especially those in the private sector, are really concerned about, you know, their well-being economically, as not all people have the, you know, reserve, personal reserves to withstand months and months at home without any form of administrative leave or, you know, once they expend their vacation time. There was some high-level executives at Charles Schwab that said, "Most Americans don't have beyond two or three months of funds in their personal accounts to, you know, cover their living expenses." You know, so they've got this short period of time, you know, two to three months where they might be able to live comfortably, but beyond that, there's just, you know, real economic limitations. And though we've seen the stimulus being passed, you know, the stimulus funds going to individuals in their households are, you know, really nominal. And so, I think we're going to see unemployment, or at least applications for unemployment benefits shoot up. So, I'm hopeful that, you know, individuals out there in our community who are struggling from an economic standpoint remain high in hope as we, you know, plug along as well. Other than that, I was able to remotely or telephonically join in on the Infrastructure Subcommittee meeting with Councilmember Barajas, who asked for a list of projects and project timelines with regards to some of these larger roadway and other infrastructure projects. And since that meeting, I haven't seen anything come across my inbox, but I think that's information, given some of the comments that we've heard tonight, that we should make public, that should also be circulated amongst our council. With regards to, I think, the biggest point of interest from a public standpoint, we discussed the traffic calming measures in pilot projects that were implemented, and staff relayed to us that we've been unable to accurately compile data to see how effective these pilot projects have become due to, you know, the changes in mobility and transportation because of the coronavirus. So, I'm hopeful that, you know, when all this passes, that we can follow up on the data from those pilot projects and look at implementing other active and passive measures to improve our quality of life for residents. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember Fernandez. And now, Mayor Protem Stalard. Do we have the Mayor Protem?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Mayor Landsberg. I want to express appreciation to Mike Vinicum of Bright People Foods. They have donated 1,100 N95 masks to Woodland Memorial Hospital. Don Clark of Clark Pacific has donated another 500 N95 masks to Woodland Memorial Hospital. Their supplies were running very low, and their supplier said that they could not fulfill a reorder request. So, coming to the rescue, these local businesses have really helped a great deal. Other than that, as President of the Sacramento Valley Division of the League of California Cities, I'm invited to a number of conference calls. I participate in some of them, including one today with California OES Office, hearing what's happening throughout the state. The good news is, everything is being managed at this time. It's difficult, but it's being managed. And I think a lot of credit goes to everybody who stepped up to do whatever they can to make this problem, let's say, be handled. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mayor Protem Stalard. My comments are not too many tonight. I too want to thank the public for sheltering in, doing what they can to help out. I know it's difficult, it's difficult for everyone, including me, but we got to do it. We're almost there. I think we're getting there. The governor is telling us some good news about every day. So, if we keep it up, we can beat this thing. I also want to publicly thank our governor, Newsom, who has, in my opinion, has really stepped up to the plate, showed tremendous leadership. Point where I think I'd like to draft something and maybe have all members of the council sign it, send it off to the governor's office, that we do appreciate what the governor has done for us and for our members of their entire state. It all trickles down to our community. So, I do want to publicly thank Governor Newsom for his efforts. I noticed the other day when he was talking, I don't think the poor man's sleeping, either that or whatever, but his eyes are red and he acknowledged he was tired. But this has taken a lot on him, a lot on him as well. And anyway, good job, Governor Newsom. The only other thing I have is, I've been enjoying the 7:00 PM neighborways, "Let's Keep It Going, Woodland." It's just a sign of hope. Let's keep it up. Now, Mr. City Manager, communications from you and the long-range calendar, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Brief update, naturally, you know, much of staff's attention continues to be focused on managing all the information, responding to the ever-changing landscapes around COVID. I do have one highlight from last week that didn't make it in the weekly, but I did want to call attention to two new officers that were sworn in last week to our police department. Renia Garcia and Sean Cattonhorn were both sworn in and are now commencing their field training, so I want to welcome them to our stellar staff over there in the police departments. So, that follows on the previous week where we announced bringing four new cadets from the Fire Academy onto our fire department. So, these will be critical resources as we move forward to maintain our service levels and give us the buffer we need should we be impacted internally due to health issues from COVID. So, that's the update. I'll turn to the long range real quick. So, April 14th, if you can believe it or not, is our next meeting. It will be a special meeting as opposed to the teleconference format that we've been utilizing the last four meetings. We're going to transition to video format for next week, and next week's special meeting agenda will be relatively light compared to the 21st. And so, in consultation with the mayor, I think we'll try the video format next week, perfect it, and then we'll be ready for the 21st where we have several media items. We'll have presentations that we'll provide via video presentation. So, next week, you know, highlights again will be updates around COVID. We'll be bringing back the urgency ordinance for the temporary moratorium on commercial evictions per the council's direction. I will also be presenting a recommendation relative to the Yolo COVID-19 relief funds that's now been stood up and other jurisdictions here in Yolo are starting to contribute to. And then, we'll also be bringing back an update to the city's temporary administrative leave policy for COVID. Current policy was adopted by council, ratified by council, and expires at the eve, midnight tonight, as that was the initial shelter-in-place deadline. Now that that has been extended, we need to modify and update our administrative leave policies to reflect that extension, but also to now incorporate the Federal Leave Act that's been provided to both government jurisdictions as well as to major employers throughout the country. So, we're finalizing that policy. I'll be releasing it tomorrow to our staff and then ratifying it next week at the council meeting. I've also requested Dr. Chapman to join us next Tuesday evening to address the council on what will be, hopefully, sort of the peak of this critical period of managing COVID here in our country, in Yolo County and our community. So, he will be providing an update on the county health officer's perspective of priorities moving into the following months, as well as the current status of where we're at as a community here. Look forward to that presentation. And then, the next regular meeting on the 21st, you know, highlight for that meeting will be the budget workshop. We are working with a finance officer right now to outline some grim to not-so-grim scenarios relative to our budget projections with the fiscal impacts primarily coming from reduced sales tax revenues, but also reduced transit occupancy tax. We will be outlining, you know, some initial measures to be taken to position ourselves to weather this period fiscally and ultimately be bringing back a final budget in time for the June adoption. So, next week's discussion with the council and maybe some initial direction will be critical to position us to be prepared to adopt the budget for next year. And then, we will also be kicking off our discussion about the Measure J ballot renewal, which the council had targeted for November 20, 20 of this year. So, we want to continue to stay on that course and outline for the council the renewal language and the approach, and come back again before the end of June with the final ballot language so that we can get it to the council. so that we can get it to the county to include with the November ballot. So that concludes my comments. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'm not going to go to item F, minutes. Are there any amendments through the minutes of March 3, 17, 24, and March 31? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
With approval, Mr. Mayor Stalard.
Fernandez, second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Stalard, seconded by, was that Fernandez?
Yes.
Seconded by Fernandez. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Landsberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stalard?
Yes.
Thank you. Carried unanimously, five zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us to item G, the consent calendar. And the only item I wish to discuss but not remove is number eight, lower Cache Creek Blood Study. And the only reason I want to bring it up is because we did receive a very extensive communication from the Yolo County Farm Bureau, and I think it behooves us to acknowledge that communication as we move our project along. City Manager, can you discuss item number eight, please, and the letter from Farm Bureau?
Certainly. So as the council may have seen in the email last week, we did receive communication from the Farm Bureau relative to our comment period on the environmental document. This is the city's environmental document, the draft EIR that was released in mid-March. When we released that environmental document, the typical comment period under the California Environmental Quality Act has a minimum of 45-day comment period established. Knowing that we were just on the forefront of an uncertain time with the COVID pandemic, we actually, when we released the document, did provide a 90-day comment period for that environmental review period. Not knowing how long the shelter in place, the impact would last, our communication back to the Farm Bureau did indicate that we had already anticipated and contemplated some difficulty for folks to potentially review the document or provide comments, given the shelter in place. We reserved the right within that response back to the Farm Bureau to obviously extend it further if need be, if we find ourselves at the end of the 90-day period or even near that, with an extended, limited ability for the public to comment. We also still have yet to schedule the public hearing to receive comments on the EIR as we want to make sure that the shelter in place has been lifted and we give people an opportunity to actually comment on that document publicly in person. So we will continue to monitor the situation and ensure that we provide adequate opportunity for individuals and organizations to comment during this time.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Does any council member wish to discuss or pull any other item from the consent calendar? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt calendar items three through 13?
Fernandez moves.
I'll second, Barajas.
The motion is by Councilmember Fernandez, seconded by Councilmember Barajas. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Yes, thank you. Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Landsberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stalard?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries on a roll call vote, five zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us to item H, which is the reports to City Manager for a COVID-19 update.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this week's COVID update is going to be relatively short compared to the past. You know, as folks have mentioned, right, we're in this sort of wait-and-see period to some degree. You know, again, I want to echo the kudos to our community members, as well as our staff members that are really rising to the challenge right now and doing their best to abide by all the orders and these new restrictions that we find ourselves having to navigate. So I think, you know, our ability to continue to stay ahead of, you know, the surge or situation at hand is largely attributable to our community's, you know, response to that. So that, I want to start with providing an update on the county's dashboard. Folks are not tracking on a daily basis and go into the county's website, their dashboard, which highlights what's happening in Yolo County and our respective communities relative to confirmed cases and those being hospitalized, but it's a great resource. So as of this evening, we now have 56 total reported cases here in Yolo County, so five new that were reported as of today, bringing that to 56. Of those 56, 17 have been hospitalized, so majority have not ultimately ended up needing to be hospitalized, which is positive. As a result, we continue to, you know, stay closely engaged with both Woodland Memorial Hospital and Federal Health. Both hospitals continue to have reasonable capacity available within their wards to treat increase in symptomatic cases that result in hospitalization. So hopefully continue to see that, that trend throughout the, the next few weeks, which again is, is going to be a critical period for us as we fight through this. Of the 56 cases, there have been two now deaths reported throughout the county. And also want to note that the county's metrics include a breakdown by community, and I do want to report that there are seven total now confirmed cases that have a city of origin being in Woodland. So we're still on the lower end of the reported cases by population here in Yolo County, again, pointing to the great job that our community is doing to abide by the shelter in place guidelines and restrictions. Also want to highlight, on multiple calls in the last few weeks, it's been brought to my attention and specifically from Pat Blacklock over at the county, that as he's on calls and as I'm on calls with my counterparts throughout the region and the state, what we're hearing is that the model that we've developed here in Yolo County in terms of coordination and collaboration is the envy of most counties, most cities. We're hearing a lot of struggles with communication between emergency response agencies and EOCs. And so I do want to credit, you know, the council and county board supervisors for their leadership in the past to step up and develop a only-in-state model whereby all of the jurisdictions in Yolo County actually contribute into a countywide fund to pay for Dana Carey and the countywide EOC. So I think without that model and that foresight years ago, we would be probably in a different situation at the moment. So I don't want to let this moment pass without, you know, recognizing the leadership in the past to really get us to where we are today. Relative to the city of Woodland itself, I think I reported last week, of the 290 full-time employees, we have, you know, roughly 207 of those continuing to perform their duties either at work in a normal workplace, as essential service workers, or where the ability provides itself via telework. Continue to have roughly 50, 60 folks telecommuting, you know, which is really important for us to ensure that we're not creating more opportunity for spread of contamination. So those systems continue to work and perform really well. The balance of the employees that unfortunately don't have the ability to telework or have jobs that provide or conducive to telework, continue to be available as emergency relief workers and on-call and available to come in as needed. Please to report that still as of today, we have zero confirmed city of Woodland employees with COVID-19. We continue to monitor that very closely and want to give kudos to our public safety chiefs and their staff for being very diligent about how they respond to calls and protect themselves, but at the same time, always be in there to be available for the public. So continue to be impressed with, with our ability to provide service, but also do so in a way that does not compromise our emergency service responders. Do report that 911 calls are trending down, maybe largely due to folks being a little more reluctant to call 911 and get in an ambulance and go to the hospital. That is offset a little bit by an increase in domestic violence that we're seeing throughout the community, and this is not unique to Woodland. I think it's a state, if not nationwide, trend as people are in closer proximity to each other more often, a natural outcome. We are also seeing more structured fires at home. And so these are smaller fires in the kitchen, but again, sort of a, a normal trend that you see either during the summertime or in situations where folks are cooking at home more often. So we need to sort of monitor those trends and see how they affect our ability to respond. The other report from the county is, there's a lot of talk over the last week regarding face coverings and to mask or not to mask, and the county health officer has been giving us considerable thoughts in terms of how to message to our communities, you know, what face coverings do and don't do to protect you from, you know, the spread of the disease. And the guidance that will be, I believe, coming out tomorrow, I was really going to emphasize and educate the public that, you know, face coverings really are less so to protect you from contracting the disease and more so as a precautionary measure should you be symptomatic, but not be aware that you're positive the face covering actually help prevent the spread to others. And really the best, you know, protection that we can provide to ourselves and others is to abide by the shelter in place guidance and only do essential trips as needed on a day-to-day basis. We did, last Friday, have a focused conference call format with the Chamber of Commerce where we got on a phone call with five of our local small business owners to hear firsthand collectively from them on their experience now two, three weeks into this, this crisis, I'll say, from their perspective and how they are adapting and responding and the struggles that they are facing. It was across the board. Some had closed down completely, even though they were able to operate under the order, while others, you know, were continuing to operate but seeing reduced revenues in business anywhere from, you know, 80% losses to, you know, some still hovering around 50 to 60%. And a lot of the variables that we see, you know, are relative to the uniqueness of the type of product that they provide and how they go about delivering their services or their products. Businesses that are more sophisticated and are able to pivot quite quickly to online formatting and social media promotions are finding themselves, you know, in a place where their business is less impacted, whereas others that may be less advanced in terms of social media and, and online presence are scrambling to try to catch up. But there are some good examples out there where businesses are, are working together to help promote each other and provide delivery where some may not have that capacity. So very encouraging to see our community working together in that manner. We did hear consistent feedback that the federal relief programs and the grant slash loan funds that were out there, while they're easy to apply for, they're slow to, to deliver in terms of the promise of appearing in the bank. So the three-day turnaround has yet to materialize in terms of time that you submit the application, but we think, you know, once the initial rush of those applications winds away through, that will start to pick up. There's a lot of frustration around the SBA, banks and banks that are or are not affiliated with the SBA. So if a bank is, is not currently an SBA lender and affiliated with the SBA, businesses that bank at those institutions are not able to access the SBA loan, so it's created some difficult challenges in transferring over to a new bank. The banks that are SBA affiliated are not taking new businesses right now. So that is a, a pain point that we will be working with our counterparts at the, the chamber in the state to see if there's a way to mitigate that. And then we are going to be working with the local businesses, develop a coordinated social media marketing campaign to promote continuing to support our local businesses. So look for the next week or two, some new creative marketing to encourage folks to shelter in place, but at the same time, support our business community. And then lastly, we're learning some, you know, good examples from other jurisdictions as to how to create very useful, easy-to-digest, step-by-step, you know, resources in terms of whether it's, you know, getting employees to be access, unemployment to how to get access to federal relief programs, to am I in a central business or am I not in a central business? Lots of questions, lots of information, so we're continuing to refine our information that we put out to assist our business community. I'll turn to, you know, our development activity does continue, particularly single-family home construction out in Spring Lake and some of our smaller infill projects. We continue to support those through permit issuance as well as onsite inspections. We have noticed some inconsistency with how some of the builders are properly adhering to best practices for social distancing on the job site. So we'll be reinforcing to the BIA and those builders the importance to not only protect their employees and their workers on the job site, but also our labor force as well. Positive news also report, we received an initial letter from HUD this week identifying the city's allocation of the CARES Act through the HUD relief, and we will be receiving $302,000 approximately in supplemental, supplemental C to G funding. There will be a subsequent guidance notice sent out that will provide some clarity around what restrictions or flexibilities will be provided with respect to using that additional funding and when we anticipate receiving it. So we'll provide the council updates as we learn more about the timing of that funding and, and what options we have to invest it here in our community. And then lastly, we continue to engage with the homeless community and provide shelter for those that are willing to accept it, both through our shelters that we have in Forth and Hope and the emergency shelter, but also providing hotels now up to 46 placements that we provided here in Woodland at local hotels. Please to report that with the exception of a few initial issues that we had with folks who were placed in hotels here, we have been relatively incident-free with the guests that have been placed in those hotels. Those placements are now being funded by the county through state funding that was provided. We will continue to work with the county to identify the exit strategy as we anticipate moving out of a shelter in place. You know, we want to be able to assist these individuals and get them placed in housing and get them connected to services. So we'll be coordinating with So we'll be coordinating with the county on that. And I also want to acknowledge our efforts of staff to, number of calls that we receive, it sounds like on a daily basis for individuals that are not from our community looking for placement here is not insignificant. We continue to redirect them to the communities that they are currently located in. So want to acknowledge the continued effort there. And then maybe close with acknowledgement to Mindy Garcia, who has been working tirelessly to assist our businesses that are continuing to try to understand where they fall within the shelter-in-place orders. And we receive, you know, numerous complaints or concerns every day from folks wondering why certain businesses may be operating. And so Mindy is, Mindy is the first point of contact to go out and reach out to those businesses with an education-first approach, but often needing to remind them that we do have the ability to enforce the ordinance. But, you know, to date, Mindy's approach has been very effective in getting compliance from these businesses. But I see that continuing to be a trend as businesses are concerned about lost revenues and potentially losing their businesses. So they will be creative in terms of how they find ways around the orders and sort of push the envelope. And so we're walking in that gray area day in and day out right now. But want to acknowledge Mindy's efforts there. So that concludes my updates for this evening and happy to answer any questions the council has.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Does any member of the council have a question or comment, or Ken?
Yeah, Fernandez.
Let's start with Councilmember Fernandez.
Thanks, Mayor Landsberg. So, Mr. City Manager, I just had a question in regards to the CARES Act funding that the city will be receiving. Is all of that going to be earmarked for a particular use? Or will there be any discretionary funds available in that amount of $320,000?
It's still uncertain exactly how flexible that CPG funding will be. We do anticipate that it will not have the same limitations that the regular allocation of CPG will have, but how broad is still yet to be seen. So as soon as we learn more, we'll make sure we give the council a heads-up and we'll be bringing forward recommendations on how to invest those dollars.
Right on. So there hasn't been any strategizing as to how to utilize those funds until there's more direction from the state and federal government? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I mean, certainly there's been some initial conversations about, you know, where would we invest this? You know, I wouldn't call them strategy sessions yet. Don't want to invest too much time there until we have a clear picture of what the full suite of options are. But, you know, clearly, you know, they're going to be targeting those that are most vulnerable, most in need in our community. So, you know, from health to society, social impacts to economic impacts. You know, I think our intention is to, you know, identify, you know, the biggest impacts in our community and see if we can use those dollars to maximize greatest return.
Okay, I appreciate that, Ken. That's it from me.
Was, did I hear Council or Mayor Pro Tem Stalard?
You did, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I just wanted to pass along that I was visiting with a city employee recently and he had only high praise for the job that interim city manager Ken Hyatt is doing in terms of caring for our employees. So I just wanted to say thank you, Ken. I appreciate what you're doing. I'm sure we all do.
Thanks, Don.
Mr. Mayor, this is Roger Rodriguez.
Go ahead, please.
The day I learned that for the unemployment application, there are usually about a handful of the seven questions on the applications. And one of the questions asks, are you actively looking for work? And so some community members out there apparently are being discouraged. The other, if you, um... I'm sorry.
You cut out, Phil Chul. I'm not sure how much council members and Ken were able to hear. You cut out for maybe 20 seconds.
Oh, got it. Do, uh, do you know where that's off? Yes.
This is, uh, Tom. Tom Stalard. I understand from the reports I've been listening to that the requirement of looking for alternative work has been lifted at this time.
That's correct.
It is not as direct to claiming benefits.
That's correct. Thank you, Councilmember Stalard. And that's what I wanted to point out on that questionnaire when folks are applying for unemployment insurance through the application, to not be discouraged by that question that asks whether or not they're actively looking for work, whether they mark yes or no. Like you said, that requirement's going to be lifted. So hopefully that'll help some folks out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Mayor Landsberg, it's Councilmember Barajas.
Right ahead, Councilmember Barajas.
Thank you. In regards to the CPG funding, Ken, is there any restrictions to that? Because typically CPG has some restrictions where you can only use that funding for capital projects versus services?
Yeah, so again, it's not clear exactly how loose they will be, but it's our understanding that there will be modification to that split to include more ability for folks to use CPG fundings to go towards services rather than some of the capital improvements.
Okay. Is there a time limit where we need to spend that money? Or do we have up until the end of the year?
You know, I don't see in this initial letter a timeframe established. I suspect that will be provided within the notice that's forthcoming. So, yeah, I mean, it sounds like there are many interests on the council and so we'll make sure that as soon as we get that notice, we'll evaluate it and provide the council with more information on how flexible the funds are and when we'll be able to present recommendations on how to spend the money.
Right, okay. And this is kind of a follow-up question to an issue that I raised the last meeting. How is our payer assistance utility program funding? Are we, is there still funds available? Or is there, are we done, if there's no funds left? What is, how much do we have in that fund?
Yeah, so annually, our budget includes $250,000 to go towards ratepayer assistance. That funding is currently coming out of Measure J funds, wherein the early years, it was my understanding that those funds took a while to be exhausted. In the last couple of years, as people have learned of the program, they actually go fairly quickly in the year. So at this point in time, there's no remaining funding in this year's budget to go towards ratepayer assistance. I will share a report that checked with the finance department last, late last week, early this week, there were roughly 590, I believe, customers that received shut-off notices from last year. And that's of, let's say, 16,000 total accounts citywide. Normal shut-off notice amount that we send out on a monthly basis is closer to 120. So significant increase, you know, we've seen in those notices that are going out. And we'll be evaluating, you know, compared to normal months, of those additional notices, you know, how does it compare on a percentage basis to residential versus commercial customers? And obviously continuing to monitor, you know, the ability for people to pay and make payments. As you recall, the council did pass a ordinance that provides for deferment payments effectively for utility payments during this time. So we're not shutting off people's water. So that may be somewhat contributing to folks, you know, maybe not paying at this time as they're concerned about, you know, other expenses that are forthcoming or lack of income. So it's something that we're watching very closely and we can bring back to the council more information on that and more anecdotes that we're hearing from residents as well as businesses relative to their ability to continue to keep up with utility bills.
Yeah, thank you, Ken. Yeah, I strongly encourage that staff take a look at that. Maybe that's an area that we can use some of our CPG funding for if needed. Thank you. That's all for me, Mayor Landsberg.
Thank you, Councilmember Barajas. I just have one comment, and that's this. I did speak with a owner of a West Main Street business who has been completely shut down and laid off 11 employees. The business applied for the payroll protection program. Today, they were informed, they were approved. They're bringing back all 11 employees real soon. Very good news to that West Main business. So encourage businesses who can apply for those loans and those grants to do so. It will trickle in and it'll work. You can bring your employees back. That's all comment I have. Thank you.
Great comment. Thank you.
This brings us to the end of the calendar. I wish to extend essentially condolences to the city of New York, who is having a terrible time. Today was a record-breaker for them. They lost almost 800 people just today. Devastated in New York, Connecticut, New Jersey. We should all send our well wishes after action. Other than that, have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.